I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you did that?
Yes.
Right, do we, do we need to repeat that, or is that okay?
So.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? May I ask who made the motion?
We'll just re- We'll just do it again.
I'm sorry.
I have a motion to open the public hearing for the Sag Harbor Village zoning board of appeals meeting of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. So, just so everybody knows, we're going to be following our procedural resolutions tonight, which allow applicants ten minutes to speak and the public three minutes to speak. Additional time can be allowed at the discretion of the board. The next item on the agenda, are the minutes, did everybody have time to run through the minutes?
Yes.
I had some corrections, which were mostly typos that I gave to Carrie, so could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting?
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Is there any correspondence requiring action? No correspondence requiring action. Next time, the item on the agenda is old business. And first up is fifty-seven Palmer Terrace, which has been removed from the agenda, which happened at the last meeting. The next item on the agenda is one thirty-two Germaine Avenue. And I believe they've requested an adjournment.
Yes.
So could I have a motion to adjourn one thirty-two Germaine Avenue to the September sixteenth meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is twenty-three Main Street. Could, and I believe they're adjourning also because they're in front of the planning board. Could I have a motion to adjourn twenty-three Main Street to the September sixteenth meeting?
I'll move that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. So, do we have any word from Liz?
Yes, walking from working month.
Okay. So, next on the agenda is eighteen Hampton Street. So, I guess we'll, we'll start. Should we wait? Oh, wait, we'll wait. Just so you know, you're next up.
Pretty rank over there.
Eat with fish.
Get a scrub.
Oh, I like fish, but I don't want to smell it. No, it's something like dry fish. Nice.
Eighteen Hampton.
Hey, someone to speak for eighteen Hampton Street? Great, could you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, good evening. David Turs from Matthews First, Pullian, Choron, two forty-one Pendigo Road, East Hampton, New York. I'm here on behalf of eighteen Hampton. I'll see the owner of eighteen Hampton. I'm also here with Ruth Zuckerman, the member of the entity, as well as Robert Strata, the ARF.
Are they going to be speaking also?
I believe so.
Okay, can, can everybody just come up and state their name and address for the record, and we'll get that over with? Great, thank you.
Robert Strata. I'm against appeal.
Great, thank you. You've both been sworn in previously. Great, thank you. And you're an attorney, correct?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. You can proceed.
It's our first appearance here tonight. Our client has been here at number of, of number of meetings, most recently on July fifteenth. As a result, these prior meetings are, I have made a number of provisions to the original contract. I don't know what we've seen drawn since the ninth. They all, if you want to ask any questions to Mr. Strata, I'll look if he can. The first floor was reduced. The original application was for two hundred and seven square foot first floor, currently at a hundred and forty-six square foot first floor petition. The seventh floor was reduced from five hundred and twelve, three hundred and six square feet. And the pyramid relief was reduced from nineteen hundred and forty-seven cubic feet to six hundred and seventy-six cubic feet. So, we believe the application is compliant with the standards set forth in the village code. Well, first, the granted variances will not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, nor will it create a detriment to nearby properties. Requested variances actually makes probably more conforming to the character of the neighborhoods. This found in the March twenty-first, twenty seventeen determination of thirty Hampton Street, which received two thousand thirty-two, says script, which would be cubic foot pyramid variance. In that finding, says, on the contrary, the home will be in better keeping with the character of the neighborhood. In that determination, kind of applicable here, it noted, we take note that the majority of the residences in the surrounding vicinity of the subject parcel sit in violation of the sky plane. As the lots in this area are predominantly long, narrow lots, nonconforming as to minimum lot width, this lot is only five, fifty-seven point zero three feet wide where a hundred feet is required, requiring sky plane violation for virtually any modification to the home, because the homes were constructed many years prior to the event of zoning in the village. The present relief is also similar to that granted to the neighboring property at twenty-two Hampton Street, which received a pyramid variance for one thousand seventy-four cubic feet in two thousand and two, resulting in five thousand and seventy-nine cubic feet outside of the pyramid. I do have copies of the thirty Hampton determination.
Your note says four thousand five hundred seventy-nine.
Oh, yes, four thousand five hundred seventy-nine.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
There's a copy from the building department records for twenty-two Hampton. Second, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant pursue other than an area variance. There was a suggestion made by a neighbor, and the feasible alternative to variances is to sell the house and buy a bigger house elsewhere. This is an absurd suggestion that this board should summarily dismiss. The same nonaffected neighbor at fourteen Hampton Street also felt inappropriate to raise our client's gender and marital status, which is entirely irrelevant to the variance standards. We would ask that any further comments be respectful and relevant to the variance standards. This property is less than forty foot wide at this street. Due to the narrow width, just like the properties at thirty and twenty-two Hampton, as noted in the thirty Hampton Street determination, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by any other method other than the requested request for an area variance. The lot is simply too narrow to allow for a second story without pyramid relief. Those lots are both wider than our lot. We wanted fifty and the other was sixty feet. Third, requested area variances are not substantial. The additional cubic footage proposed outside of the pyramid is only six hundred and seventy-six cubic feet, or three point seven two percent of the total volume of the house. We measured against the thousand seventy-four cubic feet granted to twenty-two Hampton, or the two thousand thirty-two cubic feet granted to thirty Hampton. This seven, six hundred and seventy-six is not substantial. Regarding the rear yard variance, that is only for eight feet. As been on the revised plans, I know it was greater in the original notice. So that is not substantial either. Fourth, the variance request will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood. This is type-two action under CEPR, is compatible with the character of the neighborhood and consistent with the approvals granted to neighboring properties. Finally, the alleged difficulty could be considered self-created, but this does not include the grant of the area variance. Just like similar properties which have received pyramid variances, given the size of the property, location of the existing improvements, it's impossible to add a second story without the need for variance. So far, the objections that have been advanced by the neighbors are no more than generalized community opposition, should be considered as such. Should be noted, one of the objecting neighbors receives substantially similar relief to their own property, that is the thousand and seventy-four square feet of pyramid relief for twenty-two Hampton. And the other nonaffected neighbors, none of the variances are from that side yard setback to the west, the west side of the property. So the pyramid's release is from the east, there's no setback variances from that west property, so while we understand they have the right to object, we feel that those are not warranted.
Great, thank you. Maybe Mr. Strata could go through the changes that were made to the plans? So I know you've reduced things.
Maybe if you change. I don't struggle with the calculations. I think they'll all verify that on the SAG survey as well, the numbers from about. The. As David mentioned, the proposed first floor, existing is nine hundred and sixty-one square feet, we're now proposing a smaller size than we had been at the last meeting, or the last several meetings, of one hundred and forty-six square feet. And on the seventh floor, we wrote it down, we were three hundred and six square foot request for proposed additional square footage. Also noted on the cover sheet, perceived that we have reduced the size of the level of deck. And we've taken quite seriously what the board said about the deck and conversation that involved concerning some erroneous advice that we only was given by a carpenter builder, who said, oh, you don't need a variance to do this. And she, Ruth then recognizes that, of course she does. So we've reduced the size of the deck, and we've also changed the configuration of the steps to the deck and the way, and also working to reduce the deck and ultimately the lot coverage. So on the, on the subject of the pyramid, and then backing in for the, the other calculations, the. Properly sighted rear pyramid calculation is derived from the thirty-foot mark, if it's the on the survey, from, from our drawings, twenty-two point one feet from the rear property. And you can see that the, the change to the two-spring structure is not affected by, does not affect the sky plane at that point at all.
Are you on page six dash, I mean, eight dash six point two?
Six point four, six point one, we made a note on both.
So, the only thing is that the, the twenty-two foot dimension is still from the wrong place, but I, I don't, it doesn't look to me like there's going to be a violation from there if you step forward.
I don't see, yeah, I.
So, twenty-two point one is from the house. Here, it's measured to the deck. That's the deck, the house is way back here.
It's.
Twenty-two point one.
I understand.
But if you move it, it's over here.
I understand, but it still is another.
No, no, I know, I'm just telling you that there's a mistake on here. So it would be good if you could correct that?
I can do.
Just so that it's, the record shows.
We.
It's not going to, because it's back, and this is forward, it's not going to be a problem.
Thank you.
But just.
We'll make the change.
Yeah, that would be correct, so that it's not, doesn't reflect, or what we need to say.
And, and you see that it's also at the correct elevation.
Right.
Property. The. So our, our, very familiar, we're asking, is now three point seven two, three point seven two percent? And if you go back to our March application, it is a sizable reduction.
So the last time, you were at nine hundred one, so what did you do to reduce it further?
Well, we did a few things. Obviously, we moved the position of the second floor. We've also followed a suggestion that Val had made in creating this connective, where the ridge is lower between the chimney and the third second floor. And we've, we've extended that lower section from just under four feet to just over twelve feet.
Great.
So that's helped to pick up our, to lower the, the relief request on that.
Great, no, I think that that's great, that you were able to do that.
If you take a look at the, the whole building coverage, which was another item we've been discussing, reducing the size of the deck and making other changes, you can see that we've reduced the proposed building coverage to twenty-six point nine five percent. Now, it's more than twenty percent, but it's, it's incrementally more than what it is right now, which is twenty-three point five one percent. And that's what we focused on since the last week.
Great. Do the board members have any questions at the moment?
No, I don't.
Val, you have any questions?
No.
Okay, so is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to eighteen Hampton Street?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Great, could you step forward? Have you spoken before? Okay, can you raise your right hand? I mean, just state your name and address for the record, you don't, I don't need to-
eighteen twenty-two Hampton Street.
Great, thank you, you can proceed. Yeah.
Just want to say I appreciate your work for the village and the opportunity to speak for you. I also appreciate the board's interest in the applicant and as neighbors getting together and coming to some mutually agreeable solution to our differences. And on this topic, the board has read or heard about an impromptu conversation that we, the Fire Steams and Mr. Accouchelle, had with Mr. Strata right after the last meeting we attended. The character of this chat, while friendly, has been misinterpreted, would not inspire anyone to understand, or even understand about it. I don't anticipate any agreement will be facilitated now, especially since the applicant has not approached us, the Fire Steams and Mr. Accouchelle, to even begin to discuss some sort of agreement. Please be reminded that we have had a distant but cordial relationship with the applicant. You may recall that she once came to dinner at our house. The applicant's proposal so egregiously violates the existing zoning codes, that the idea of furthering that egregiousness seems outrageous and could serve as a dangerous precedent for other applicants with similar requests. Applicant lives in a very charming house that right now is a self-purse. She is looking to make it into a sow's ear. There are many arguments against her.
Yeah, you're supposed to, it's not a conversation, it's a hearing.
She's looking to make it into a sow's ear. There are many arguments against her proposal principally impeding our access to light, air, and view. This is before we deal with the inevitable disturbance inherent in construction for a long period of time during implementation of what she wants, all to build a nonconforming addition. With all due respect to Mr. Strata, I believe he is not a licensed architect. Therefore, it seems to me we're missing some key elements, such as some kind of topographical study, which would show the difference in grade between our house, the applicant's house, and the architect's house. These are important considerations to the war. Also, no matter what the names of the applicant's name, our larger subject system, due to the number of bedrooms, if you should. Installing a larger subject system involves huge expense, requires access to other piece property by large machinery. Perhaps this has already been addressed and we are under there. I understand there is also a problem with the amount of off-street parking that you need to provide. I think I will see now to Michael Fire Street.
Great, thank you. Great, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Michael Hardstein, twenty-two Hampton Street.
Right, and you've spoken before?
Yes, I have.
Great, thank you.
As I said, my wife and I, Son, who just spoke, on twenty-two Hampton Street. The applicant had purchased her house about fourteen years ago. She knew, or should have known at the time, through proper due diligence, that the house at that time grossly violated existing zoning codes and existed by dint of grandfathering provision. Ignoring applicable zoning code, several years after purchasing the house, applicant instructed nonconforming debt on the rear of her house, the deck in the shower. Now deciding that what she should have bought was a bigger house, she set about planning, relatively speaking, a massive increase in the size of her house. The result, instead of coming to this board with the minimum variances necessary to achieve force phase, she came with the maximum of variances. Her initial application and accompanying plans sought five variances, among them two, what I understand from my zoning work with those meetings, were profoundly unacceptable increases in pyramids and lots of private private life. There seems to have been no effort presented to this board, plans that would require a minimum variance necessary to achieve her desired house expansion. And how has the applicant succeeded after the board's initial reaction? To her representative, she has month by month chipped away in the tiniest way of attempts to persuade the board to retain variances far in excess, because necessary to achieve her goal. And notwithstanding at least two strong suggestions by the board, that the applicant could further with the architectural review board for guidance, neither the applicant nor her representative has consulted with the ARB. Instead, applicant has continued to chip away inch by inch at the gross variance numbers, take a foot off the width of the nonconforming deck, extend by just a few feet, the bit in the ridge of her roof from the peak of the historic house. I think someone had suggested at the board that, that reduction in feet could have been carried all the way to the back. I could go on about the applicant's failure to take into account factors to be considered on the seating area variances, but there are already five, one gorgeous field, videos worth of readings from the forge considering that patient. And I could say a word about, as proposed, the application of applicants' air conditioning compressors. I've listened to several zoning board appeals hearings, and many, when compressors are located too close to the neighbor, there is much discussion about sound-avoiding fences. It looks like applicant's compressor will be within nine feet of my property, and there has not been a word about the need for noise-avoiding fences, and there is no indication on the client of such offense. Here is why that issue has been raised before. What is going to be done to basically noise from air-conditioned compressor? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to eighteen Hampton? Okay. No? Is there anyone Zoom or Skype? Oh, there is? Okay. No one? No? Okay, great. Could you state your name and address for the record? Great, thank you.
Yes. First, I have to reject you. I know that attorneys are engaged in the practice of throwing to the end of the law and hoping that something will stay, but there was nothing at all hostile in my relationship with Ruth, which I think very diligent. And my reference to the size of her family was simply in relation to the size of the house. And I compared it to my own house, where I grew up and lived, in a much smaller structure. That was the only reason I brought it up. And I'll apologize if that has. So, thirty years ago, when I acquired fourteen Hampton Street, I did so with a quite reasonable expectation that zoning laws and inspections conventional, historical, and innovative area would carefully govern any changes to my own or neighbor's property. Current request, multiple variances at eighteen Hampton, challenges this expectation and raises concerns about regulatory consistency and respect for the district's heritage. Twenty-two Hampton and thirty Hampton were raised, I don't think that those are actually applicable to standards, but I suggest that you take deeply into that. I understand that zoning regulations inherently create restrictions intended to preserve the common good, and that for variance to be granted, the applicant must demonstrate unnecessarily what is unique to the property. This application is valid. Specific to eighteen Hampton Street, I contend the power, the house is already not conforming, you know. Any limitations were known at the time of the search. No unique or peculiar circumstances justify this exception. The desire for expansion motivated by personal. The desire for expansion motivated by personal circumstances such as visiting grandchildren does not constitute hardship under zoning laws. The burden of providing substantial and relevant evidence to meet all statutory standards for variance has not been met. Proposed addition would increase the mass of eighteen Hampton Street, reducing open space resulting in increased congestion, diminished privacy, tainted and paralyzed and drained. I am particularly concerned about drainage and the potential flooding in my garden due to the significant elevation difference. I want to correct misstatements that this just brought up in the meeting. Son of Fire Steams did this already. The illegal debt, but I want to add something, the illegal debt at ten Hampton Street is more than just stairs, which she has said fairly cavalierly in the past or written off as oversight. Ms. Zuckerman's attorney said that, I believe, he said that this was an oversight or Mr. Strata, I'm not sure which. But this is, I'd like to show you what the debt is like.
Yes, we've been to the site, we've seen, yes, thank you.
That's not something that's far from true. Two significant regulatory matters remain unaddressed, and Mr. Fire Steams addressed these as well, off-street parking. I understand the village code requires a three-car driveway for a four-bedroom house, nearly the full length of the property, yet there's no mention of this in Mr. Strata's plans. Has Ms. Zuckerman informed about a fifty-four-foot-long driveway running alongside her house, limiting yet more of its original design? And the septic system upgrade? But the county health dictates minimum distances of ten feet for septic installation installations relative to property lines and structures. Where does Mr. Strata intend to locate the new system, had any study been done? Additionally, the application admits details about adjacent structures. They are not the bonds of the past, merely property lines. Due to the close proximity of our houses, I ask that Mr. Strata prepare physical scale models that highlight and point out practical features. I'm introducing into the record another letter, the second letter from a real estate professional in which she expresses her concern about the negatives of factors, the political issue, moving over our garden. Molly Sander, a local authority group, wrote the following. And it made us sound party and it doesn't involve numbers, it's not quantifiable, but she said the following. The prospect of the house next door being expanded is unfortunate as it would impact the light and air that makes this garden best. And I contend less valuable. At the last meeting, Mr. McGuire appeared to accept Zuckerman's landscapers determination that proposed addition would affect, but would not affect light and water. With all due respect, I do not think a guy armed with a lawnmower at a rate qualified to make determinations best led to ille physicists and no word to miss. Near the end of the meeting, Chairman Baker said that he was still troubled by the coverage. He also acknowledged that the neighbor to the left, that being moved out, was getting a book and, I quote, a raw deal. I agree. In closing, I'll list the reasons the application fails New York State's by the criteria as to granting a zone variant. One, reasonable return. Expansion is not necessary for economic viability. Ms. Zuckerman can sell the property for a healthy profit as is. Unique circumstances, true hardship asserted is not unique and applies to the broader neighborhood. Three, self-created. All limitations were known and the time of purchase. Fourth, alteration to neighborhood variance. Addition would upset the balance and character established by existing historic structures. Her housing mind are two graceful structures that are linked by larger structures. And there is a balance comparative. Several of your architects, you understand negative space better than I do. I believe that this addition would upset that balance. And then the detriment to public welfare. Project with negativity effect, we, the neighbors, by diminishing open space, light, air, and privacy. There will be windows over where I dine in summer. I'm once again urging the board to deny the application because it does not meet statutory or practical requirements. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Yeah, is there anyone else from the public that wants to wants to speak to eighteen Hampton Street?
Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, would you like to reply?
It is a letter from the, it's a letter of guidance from Suffolk County Department of Health Services dated April twelve, two thousand and five. And it clearly stipulates what is a bedroom and what is not a bedroom. We are not increasing the number of bedrooms in this house.
So what is the total number of bedrooms you're planning on having?
This, there are, there is a, you're adding, you're supposing to add a new bedroom and a new addition on the second floor of the house and converting the bedroom that is currently in the front of the house on the second floor into an office.
And in the basement, there is no habitable space?
No.
And on the first floor, there is no bedroom, correct?
That's correct.
So even if you had three bedrooms, you're only required to have two parking spaces?
But I'm just. Thank you.
But, and it would seem to me that with the existing driveway that you can park two cars back to back.
Thank you very much.
So I don't know, Val, do you agree with that assessment?
Well, I have a lot to say, and I'll make you brief. Any new construction is going to trigger a need for a new innovative alternative septic system. So the county is going to look at this application and say, you have an archaic system, it has to come out. So it's, the bedroom count issue is not something pertinent to what we're talking with parking. But I have a few other questions. Mrs. Fierstein, you said that the applicant is not an architect, is that true?
No, it's.
Okay, can I ask you that question, sir? Are you a registered? Okay, so.
Most are not a licensed surveyor, nor am I a licensed.
Right, well, please keep in mind, as your counsel, you cannot present anyone to the board as a licensed professional. Architect is a protected title.
Only a person licensed in New York State can use that title as architect. It's a misdemeanor to represent otherwise. If someone goes around saying that they're an architect and are not, it's a classy felony. Not saying that you've committed a crime, but it could be cause for an applicant to not know how to design something where you can fit the design within the parameter of the pyramid. Working at your drawings and you can clearly fit this bedroom addition within the pyramid law. It's just a thought, it's a recommendation, this board tries to help the applicant get you where you want to be. And working with that saying, helping me help you solve the problem. You have this issue with your neighbor. You can clearly design this addition that makes it conform. And I'm not saying that you did something incorrectly, but as an attorney, please check that you don't represent your applicant or whoever as an architect. It's not something permissible by New York State Department of Education. So little bug that I have when we see applications that are difficult because they come back again and again and again. We had one on Redwood Road, at least eight attempts. An unlicensed practitioner who did not know how to design within the parameter of the pyramid. So looking at your design, I think that you can get where you need to be. It just shifts over, you get out of the pyramid, the neighbors will not have a complaint. And I, I see this coming to an impasse where if you could possibly push that addition over, you'll get the bedroom that you want, and, and it can work. It won't increase your lot coverage. It won't impact the pyramid, it's just a suggestion, you know. I'm sorry to bring it up, but it seems that this is what I'm hearing. We're going in a loop here, trying to say how to close the loop a little bit.
You're trying not to lose the deck equally originally.
Right. But.
You understand that.
There's a way to approach this without coming, this is a large variance that you're asking for, and you have two neighbors who are opposing it. And I'm just observing and saying, how can we help you? How can we help this application? It's difficult. It's a self-created hardship, and it's something that inch by inch, you're asking to see if it can get better. And it doesn't seem to be, it's improving, but you still have two neighbors who are opposing to some degree. And just trying to ask a question out loud, that's helping me improve, I don't know. You know?
I suspect that.
Wait, you need to approach the, if you're going to speak, you need to, because the microphone is above. Thank you.
I suspect that what they're posing isn't just this game of inches. And I'm not an attorney either, but I've sat through some of these meetings to realize that there's more going on than what's going on in these roles. So if we were to completely eliminate the ask on the pyramid belief, there would be no deck.
The property is small and your addition could shift over, so there's no request at all.
When it's shifting it over, doesn't the deck have to go away?
Right, so somebody, yes, you do, that's just a question.
Because you can't, you cannot increase the building with a lot of coverage.
Yeah.
That, that's.
It's already, it's an excessive amount of lot coverage, but it's something important to consider because I think as you look at this, and I'm not speaking as the board, but saying as an architect, if you look at this, you can take that bedroom addition and you can shift it and you don't have a pyramid violation.
What happens to the deck when you do that?
You're going to have to, something has to give to make your addition work.
The deck has to give to not have a request for pyramid belief.
It's a very small lot.
That's what is at stake. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have in my hand the CFO for this property. It's dated. It's two thousand and thirteen. This is when the prior owner receives the CFO and sold it to Ruth. It's a three-bedroom house with two baths. They are, what Mr. Strata was describing, he's reconfiguring a room at the front of the house which has an en suite bathroom. It is definitely a bedroom. And I also know from, to find the research in this regard that Suffolk County does not, will not know that this issue, this is a Florida, hey, intending to build or buy the addition, create, just pay four bedrooms.
But the plans don't indicate that. The plans on the third floor show, even if you count the office as a bedroom, it's three bedrooms upstairs.
This object needs a new septic system.
It's going to have to have a new septic system regardless.
Right.
Because of the, the size of this.
My, my issue is not as much with the septic system, that's a given. It's about the park.
Right.
I believe that the code is strict about that.
Yes, if there are three bedrooms, there are two spaces required, which there are, yes, sure. I mean, this is the plan here. So there's a bedroom here, a bathroom, a bedroom there, and this is an office, but even if we say it's a bedroom, there are three bedrooms.
Well, so if there, if, if there was, if there were three bedrooms when she purchased the house, she's adding a bedroom.
Well, they're reconfiguring. I'm assuming, Mr. Strata, you're reconfiguring the second floor so that you only end up with three bedrooms still?
You have a, you have a, in our existing three twenty one, I'm sure you know where the house is built right now. And the roof is not en suite identified currently as bedroom number two.
It's the office is.
That, that will become the office, correct?
Right, this is showing two bedrooms upstairs.
That's.
Existing, yeah.
That's what's there.
Right.
That's exactly how this is.
The office counts as a bedroom, right?
No, hang on a second.
The office, library, stu-, studio, study.
That's the other I just sent.
It's a bedroom.
But if there's a five-foot case opening, that's not, that does not have a door.
Still counts, if you didn't put a bed in, the board is going to say this is a bedroom.
I'm just telling you that with a proper case opening and not just a doorway, it doesn't count as a bedroom.
Talk to the board of health?
I have.
Yeah.
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 It, it honestly doesn't.
Yeah, but I just want to get back to you.
Yeah, you need to go back to the podium.
So that's where the microphone is? We got to make sure, because this is being transcribed, so one person has to speak at a time, and we have to speak.
A question in the remarks about the number of bedrooms, and I'm just asking if you would kindly look at three point one, that's the existing.
But really, as far as our board goes, if there are two or three bedrooms, the parking count is still the same, it doesn't change, it's two. So we don't need to discuss bedrooms anymore.
I didn't bring it up.
The health department has different regulations, but they're not going to care, I mean, they're going to care about the bedrooms.
Yeah.
But that's for them to decide.
Right.
The fact that you're adding on so much and changing so much is going to trigger a new septic system regardless of bedroom count.
Did I answer the question regarding the number of bedrooms?
Yes, we're good, we're good with that, thank you. It's just, so one question that we do always ask is, is there sufficient space to install the required septic system? It looks like there would be in the backyard between the house and this sort of a southwest property line. But just so you know, you're going to have to do that before you're going to be able to, as you go through the permit process. Any other board members have any questions or comments? So how is, how, how is everybody feeling about this at the moment?
I'd like to hear from our two attorneys.
Do you want to hear from me, from who?
Our two attorneys on the board, I mean. I mean, our two architects, I'm so sorry.
Looking at you.
Okay.
Can I just make a quick?
Yes, you may, sure.
I'd like to correct the record, Mr. Torius, as pointed out, it's not my intention to see the board or the public regarding the status of Mr. Strata as a, as not a licensed architect. So to the extent that I did say that, I totally started that, not my intention. I'd say that was correct, but I hear on that point.
Great, thank you, thank you.
We'd like to state for now, you know, my client does not want to tamperfice the outdoor living space for debt in order for a trade-off here where that interior living is finished. So we'd like to proceed on the plans that you have. We feel it's been significant changes to them from the original application that their, the, the neighbor's opposition, while they've referred repeatedly, it's been the same since day one regardless of the size of what they propose. The, the neighbor to the west, these variances, none of these variances are from their property line. Pyramid is not from their property line, and it's, it's really, I don't even know how to say, ironic to hear a, a neighbor who receives a thousand square feet of pyramid relief for their own property, saying that six hundred and seventy-six square feet relief for ours is now making it a pigs' year, so, or a sow's year. So I, I really, I hope the board is troubled by, you know, the neighbor complaining about the same thing they have on their own property. But I, I think we're, we're willing to proceed on the plans that you have. We feel we've done a good job here and provided plans that meet the standards for the total approval.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Quickly, if I could respond to. Uh, quickly, if I could respond to that, I think the distinction here is that you only have less than two feet. Of the. Residents next to the lot line, and that's why there's opposition to the extent that you've experienced. But on page. This is page A six point two. It's called the proposed south elevation. And it shows your proposed two-bedroom addition. And it has the six windows, this is at the top of the drawing. And literally, if you shifted that over, there is zero pyramid log request. And although it consumes a portion of the debt. That's what I was suggesting. And. Not that you have to pursue that route, but. It's something as a part of a five-part factor. Is there anything we can do to reduce the request? And let's just, I'm gonna do a recommendation. So I have no other comment. Um, it's nice to see the septic system on these maps, so we can talk about parking. And other than that, no comment.
I would just offer as a, in in terms of the nuisance of construction and putting in a new septic system. Sag Harbor has been transforming itself for twenty years. And if the neighbors to this house have not experienced it yet, they're just lucky. My house, my street has been under constant construction for over ten years. You cannot park during the day. Virtually every house on the street has been completely transformed. And many of them needed much larger variances than this. So living in Sag Harbor now means being inconvenienced. Like construction, you know, period. It's a shame, but it's it's the reality.
Um. I I, the the pyramid variance now is well within the range of walking normally. Except because it's well below a thousand. So that's one point, um. The other point is that it it. Because of the way that it's situated, it does impact more the neighbor to the east than the west. Because the property actually gets bigger, um, as you go to the south. Um, a couple of things that could be done to help mitigate some things. The existing, um, AC handler is going to stay in the same location. Could you, maybe Mr. Strata, could you come forward? Because these are mostly architectural surgical things. You're not proposing to move that?
We, I'm not proposing to move it, whatever, um. If there was a. Start again. We're not proposing to move several things. The Bilco entrance to the basement.
Right.
Which is linked to where the condensers are located.
Right.
And there's a very small area back there where a lot is taking place. So, uh, at the moment, we are not proposing to move. Move this AC.
So, um. Maybe to help, um, ease the, um, the concern of the neighbor. Uh, we could call for some sound attenuating fence in between the AC handler and that property line on the east.
I think we can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, the other, the other concern is drainage, which is definitely a concern, and the house would have to have gutters. To a dry well, and there is no dry well shown on here, which would be good because the. The calculation for the runoff needs to be. Conducted so that there's an adequate dry well for it to run into, so that would mitigate the water coming off of the new addition. Because there is a slope to the, uh, west. Sometimes we ask for additional dry wells, you know, along the property line to catch. Runoff on the grade. I don't know how the board feels about that as a.
You've seen the the shift in grade from twenty-two to eighteen.
Right.
Are we asking for a dry well?
Well, no, I'm just asking for comments from the board to see if there, if that's something that.
Well, I just wanna make, be sure that we are protecting the house to the east from any additional runoff from the house due to the slope.
Mm-hmm.
I would think that one dry well could accomplish that, but I'm not an engineer.
But it depends on where the septic's going.
Right, right.
That has to be.
There have been applications to Suffolk County that if you can show that there's no other place to put a septic system. That you could put it in a driveway.
Right.
You have to make an application to them to do that.
I think there's plenty of room.
So if you added the dry well or two in the back.
Right, but there's probably.
Back here. Yeah, yeah. So. A septic system under the driveway.
I think it would probably be a good idea if there was a a dry well and the low, the low points of the property catch. Runoff before it goes onto the neighbors.
It it's a requirement in many municipalities.
So I guess we'd like that shown. Right, no, but that that's, so I think that we would like to do that and have that shown.
Yeah.
I think the, uh, the septic system is also important to, because invariably they want a septic in the front yard. And it may have to go in your driveway location. We've had folks, not necessarily this application, but there have been people who said, I can't put the septic. Um, in the front yard because I can't get the parking, which is not true.
Mm-hmm.
Put a cast concrete cover and you can drive on top of the septic system, so.
I haven't brought Drew Bennett on this project yet at all.
Right, when you come to the department for variance, it's, it should be a full application.
Absolutely.
If you're filing for.
We would submit that to Yank and Drew's.
Right.
Work would be a part of that application. We're here to, I mean, we put this application together and. And our original set of drawings that we submitted back the March of full set. Uh, but, uh, we have not gone to the vision.
I think that the 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 main problem is the, you know, the the length of the second floor. Abutting the east property. I mean, that's. You know, there's gonna be a wall of house there where there was not, there's one on the first floor, but then now that will be on the second floor. Um, but it's a condition that happens. Unfortunately, all over the village.
And we've set it as far back as we can in the hour.
And they did step it back nine feet from where it originally was.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes.
Now, Damon, do you have any comments?
Figure out where the septic is gonna go, figure out where the dry wells are gonna go. That's that's one thing. And again, if you moved it, I know you want to keep the deck, but if you. Move the addition to the the west, that's what helps you far better.
Well, it won't help the neighbor who's complaining about light.
Yeah, right.
Now, I think the project as it is, they've made some significant reductions, very significant. And it's well within what's going on in this village, whether we like it or not. There are small lots that aren't suitable for the way people live. These days, and many, many houses just need to get bigger, and there's a whole history of dozens and dozens and dozens of cases. Where things similar to this have happened and are happening as we speak, so. I don't think that this rises to such a level that, uh, it's out of proportion to things that. This and other boards have granted in the past. I just don't.
I agree.
And make a quick point, the, to make the addition conform, looks like less than four feet. To avoid a pyramid's variance. On the drawings to shift, to shift it over, and so for that reason. It's a marginal change.
Right.
Perhaps it won't be noticed.
You've been to the site.
Yes.
And you've seen the deck, and you've seen the side of the table jumping on the deck. And now the whole home occurs in its midst, lift the deck the way it is, and we've made it compromise to reduce the size of the deck. But suddenly say, okay, we're gonna not ask for any pyramid relief, even though we're asking for three point something percent. Uh, the idea here is that she still gets to keep somewhat, uh, a deck that she can live outdoors.
It's not so much the pyramid, but it's it's lot coverage as well.
Well, there you go, back to the deck.
Right, and the logic is that if the pyramid sat, if a, if the house sat on top of the deck, you're decreasing, uh.
And pleasure of outdoor living in Sag Harbor in the summer.
You're also decreasing the, uh, lot coverage.
Which is already pretty high.
Yeah.
What's the percentage now?
Twenty-three point something now, and we're asking for twenty-six point nine.
Yeah.
That's building coverage, lot coverage is thirty-five existing.
Okay.
Versus.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, to, um, move this along here, um, are you guys feeling that you want to see, uh, where the these dry wells would be?
I don't need to see it.
Okay.
No, but they should be on applications.
So, um, one thing that you need to add to the survey are. A dry well for the roof runoff, but then another one at the low point of the property to help abate the runoff. From the property to the neighbor to the west.
Do that right away.
Okay, um. I guess. At least a four-foot-high sound attenuating fence around the air conditioning handlers.
Which we can do without moving the location of the condenser.
Right, um. And. Perhaps to satisfy, um. Then they could just be on your, your list cycles. You don't really have a cycling in here, right?
No.
Okay, so maybe on the survey, the the surveyor can show the two cars in the driveway to.
We can do that as well.
The, uh, parking.
Yes.
So it it looks like. I know that you you're sort of satisfied with the way things are at the moment.
I mean, you could make all of those conditions of an approval.
Right, yes.
Or you could make them required before the actual decision. If you want an updated survey prior to the decision, you can do that too, like you've done that before.
Right.
And I have a decision on tonight where we have those as conditions of approval.
I just think it's well within many, many variances that we have granted and other boards have granted over the years. At this point, because of the exceptions that they've made, there's nothing outstanding about this. Uh, I think it would be easily challenged if we were to deny it frankly.
Yes, no, I agree, because even the.
Setting decisions that this board has.
Right, exactly.
Guided by as administrative board, you are bound by the precedent.
I I'm saying these things out of respect for the neighbors.
Right.
Who who may not be completely aware of, of how this situation compares to. To all the other things that have been granted and that are going on in the village.
Even the second floor addition distance to the property line is something that we've granted. In certain circumstances, much less than this, so that's also. Uh, something that we, you know, have to take into account. Uh, Damon, are you, are you feeling okay about this at the point with those additional conditions about the?
It's all within what we've granted before.
Right. I know value, I know that you would like it.
It was, the board has come to a consensus that it appears that reasonable changes have been made. So, um. I still see a way to design this addition to make it conform, and for that reason. Uh, I have hesitation. However, we have three other board members who are in concurrents.
Well, uh, also, I thought making it conform would impact negatively to the neighbor to the east, who is very concerned about. Light and shadow.
Right.
So I would grant the variance, even though it could be less variance to the code, but it would be negative. To to the neighbor who's gone to the trouble of showing up for these meetings.
And also preserving the quality of life of the owner, being able to enjoy somewhere outdoors.
Right, so.
That we've modified to make it smaller.
Great, thank you. So do you guys have anything else you wanna add?
No, I don't.
Okay, great. Um, okay, so could I have a motion? Close the public hearing for eighteen Hampton Street. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And could I have a motion to direct our? And I guess, um. Yeah, could we request the the survey, survey at the decision? So could we have this, we we do wanna request the the survey before the decision. That would show the dry wells and the the sound attenuating fence around the AC handler and the. And the parking shown on it.
Not a problem.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
So, um, could I then have a motion to direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for eighteen Hampton Street? That would include, um, dry wells for the roof runoff. And a dry well at the low point of the property for grade runoff. Sound attenuating fence around the AC handler and compliance with two parking spaces minimum.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Yes, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Valerie, you know?
I'm a no.
Okay, on to new business. Um, um, next on the agenda is twenty-two Oakland Avenue.
I'm sorry, I I can't hear the speaker at all.
Oh, just hold on one second. Could I have a motion to open twenty-two Oakland Avenue?
I'll make the motions.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
Anthony Burrow Law, sixty-eight, eighteen, street, uh, representing, um. Twenty-three Oakland Avenue.
Can you raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you.
Hey, um, you have to forgive me, I'm, uh, just getting over a cold, so I'm having a little trouble, um, speaking, but, um. As best I can here. Okay, um, so.
Actually, before you start, I, uh, wanted to ask Liz a question, because the the garage is being demolished. It it, the setbacks have been, um, noticed. For the new rebuilt garage, but that's also gonna require pyramid variance too. Bract, the pyramid isn't just grandfathered.
Is he reconstructing what was there?
It's moving, the entire garage is being demolished.
Okay.
And it's being.
Constructing something new, so then you would need variances for whatever.
Pyramid, so just understand that you're gonna need pyramid variances for the garage in addition to the house. And we need spot elevations on the, on the survey, because there aren't any show, they're just corners shown. And we need the, you know, the pyramid tied to the spot elevations, either five or ten feet apart. So.
Uh, this is, but it's not a garage, right? It's an accessory apartment?
Um, well, the the existing building is about seven hundred, I think seven hundred thirty square.
We've all visited the site.
Two car garage.
Yes.
The intent is to rebuild it on a smaller footprint. Um, because the maximum size for an ADU, even if it includes a spot, is six hundred square feet. So the idea is to do a one-part garage and the remaining part of that will be a, uh. Uh, a ye of that for all three square feet. Um, the. Building is not contributing, uh, with garage, it's not contributing, so it should be an issue of, uh, having that, uh, demolished.
No, no, I just wanted to confirm what it is. It's referred to in several different, with several different terms throughout the application.
So you can, you can proceed then. I just wanted to clear up the, some of the, um.
Okay, so the, um, the project is twenty-two Oakland Avenue, as mentioned in the report, takes two structures, a. Sixteen hundred thirty square foot, two-story, single-family historic district contributing property. Uh, constructed about nineteen hundred and then nine, oh, of course, yeah, it's gonna be gonna move that, uh, nine hundred thirty-six square foot unfinished. Non-contributing garage. Um, the project in scope, it entails installing a new foundation and adding one and two-story additions to the dwelling. And, um, demolishing and rebuilding the garage of a smaller footprint. Reuses a single-car garage, EDU, and installing a sleep pool and a sanitary system. Alright, so, um. Alright, so um the proposed um the variances that we are acting toward here are um the first one is a setback variance for the primary structure of point one feet, and that is really just due to the fact of the uh building not being perfectly perpendicular to the property line, so adding adding to the uh rear ends up uh going over the um and keeping in the same wall plane um as uh contributes to that one-inch um overage. Now, the second um variance is for uh knee-grass wealth, um fifty-five point two feet from the uh property line rather than ten feet. Um, this third one is for um second, first and second floor additions, uh protruding one hundred, one thousand two hundred thirty cubic feet into the sky plane where zero is permitted. And from uh three hundred dash twelve dot six to increase the G F A by four hundred seventy-three square feet or twenty-nine percent. Um, the total G F A will be still, though, will still be under the uh well, under the um maximum allowed for the uh property. Uh, the accessory structure which we just uh came up with um is uh this is really just rebuilding the garage in a smaller footprint, but maintaining the um existing uh non-conformity setbacks. Uh lot coverage, the building coverage uh actually goes down slightly because of us reducing that uh footprint of the garage. Um, so does the rear yard coverage actually goes down slightly as well, but the total lot coverage will go up from um point E three, point nine percent to twenty-seven point four percent. Um, so then I have the uh G F A breakdown, uh which is the the total G F A for the proposed, I think it's getting proposed, the additions will be two thousand one hundred three square feet. Um, going into the.
Uh just before you move on, uh is that, did we deter, I can't remember now, did we determine that the ADU has to be part of the G F A or not? It's not, correct?
We said last time it was not.
Right, okay.
They would be over every time.
Right, right.
Now, we, you said that the the expanded G F A was how much? Because it says four seventy-three, we're twenty-nine percent, we're we're to fifties permitted.
Right.
That's correct?
Yes, that's right, yep. Um. Okay, so uh looking at the uh spot test here, um you know, we believe this is some uh modest addition in architectural elevation um operations. Um we in in keeping with the scale and character of the of the neighborhood. Um, you know, the benefits sought by the by the uh homeowners to add a second story story and um additional uh living space. Uh, but because of the narrowness of the lot, uh many meaningful expansion will require area area variances. Um, just one thing to note about the pyramid uh relief there, it's uh it's one thousand two hundred thirty cubic feet for the uh main house. But I would add that the the one-story existing, there's sort of a hodgepodge of one-story addition, existing one-story additions to the house that are being removed. And they um some a portion of those additions, I think if you can go to X one. Um. So beginning of the set. Watch for the photos of those telling you, um you can see those are hodgepodge one-story additions, and they are uh they do sort of create already um violate the pyramid off, so the the net flow total of between what we're removing and what we're adding will be an increase of seven hundred ninety cubic feet for uh uh currently.
So just be aware that may change, though, when you do your spot elevations and take your new calculations. Okay. We just want the board to be aware. So it's the the whole rear is, pardon?
No, no, uh sorry.
The whole rear is coming off, correct?
From that, that's sort of strange slanted roof part, um you see it's coming off and being rebuilt.
And is the house going on to a whole new foundation?
Yes, new foundation.
There's a whole new basement with bedrooms, yeah, you saw that.
And we're working on the decept, deciding to accommodate the.
So the the existing house will be elevated?
It will not, the existing bridge line will not be any higher than the existing bridge line.
Right, but you're gonna.
We have some terrain there that we can work with to drop the first floor uh a little bit to get a little bit of extra ceiling height on the first floor.
So you're gonna but you're gonna sort of jack the house up to to install the.
Put a new foundation in, yes, the house will be lifted up off existing.
And are you, how much are you stripping it down?
Um, we are stripping it down to the um we're gonna be keeping the existing windows, uh keeping the existing decorative woodwork, uh you know, repairing where necessary from the front of the house, but new shingles, uh siding. Um, yeah.
So is that all noted?
It is, um A, I think it's A for the building elevations, um A five is the building sections, A it and I also have framing plans that indicate everything that is gonna be what we're saving and what we're what we're keeping.
I mean. So the basement will now have two bedrooms, a common room and a gym, which the health department would probably refer to those as bedrooms as well. Correct?
Um, you're allowed to have have, I I that's our question, because you're allowed to have.
Seven bedrooms.
Well, you're allowed to have certain amenities, meaning, you know, beyond a living room and a dining room and a kitchen, you can have one, like you can't have four dens, but you can have one den, so the the common room is a playroom. So you're allowed to have that, you're probably allowed to have a gym, so those aren't necessarily considered bedrooms.
Okay, I thought it was a thing where the health department would consider that, even if it's not gonna be used, is that, I'm probably wrong.
Um, well, they do give you certain, you know, room designations. Um, so I don't, I don't honestly that is more of a question for the health department. I don't know, what do you think, Val? Some of those rooms should be not bedrooms.
My experience with the health department is just to be open with them, give them plans and let them decide.
Right.
Better or not.
Right, but just in terms of um us, in terms of parking, you're aiming for a five-bedroom house? Okay, so we're gonna need four spaces, correct? And it looks like you.
On the driveway, right, to the rear there, plus we're keeping one bay of that garage, so there's certainly a parking issue there.
Okay. Um, because there are so many, though, it might be worth having you show the cars in the driveway, just so that we can confirm that we do have enough spaces for it. I don't know, what do you feel about the bedroom count? Do you think it's gonna be higher?
The gym has a bathroom, you know, the gym has windows and the gym will possibly count as a bedroom.
Except that it has no door on it.
Right, the door can be.
Right.
Um, something that they may constitute that as a bedroom. But again, you're a survey with no septic system designed, so there's no way to make an intelligent um informed decision about the parking, you know, the health, wanna see the cars and.
I think it would need five cars, as long as the driveway is gonna continue where it is now and not be become part of the grassed-in backyard or whatever, um, right?
The the septic, where are you planning at this, putting the septic system, because that may be a problem based on the location of the pool.
Yeah.
And there's not much, because you've got setbacks from pools and and buildings and property lines, because those systems, you know, for that size house, even if it is only five bedrooms by the health, via the health department, it might be six, it's gonna be a very big system.
We're still working on that um septic layout, and it's gonna be definitely gonna be two separate systems, one for the ADU and one for the those main house, hoping to be able to squeeze it into the front yard.
Um, I guess, because it's so tight here and that there are so many bedrooms, I think that we would want to see how you're planning on laying that out, because we don't want to give you variances for something that then can't have a septic system.
Boy, Anthony, is this tied to the sewer system?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, we're not, uh, I don't think we're anywhere near any of the planned expansion here, it is either.
Your.
From what I've been told, from what I've been told, that street would is twenty or thirty years away.
Has proposed waistline to sewers. Right between the word rise and street.
Rise and street?
I'm sorry, the uh.
Oh.
Survey. You left that one, sorry. The, alright, but it would be helpful to see the septic system.
He's looking through.
Uh, for parking and footprints.
I guess the one general comment that I have is that the lot coverage is very high. But again, we're at, you know, almost twenty-eight percent here. I understand the need for the pyramid variance and the building coverage isn't so bad, but we're jumping up there quite a bit on the lot coverage.
Well, and also, I was gonna ask, um in terms of the pyramid variance for the ADU and the garage, um can we consider moving that from its current location? So it doesn't need the same setbacks? Center it in a lot, make it smaller, center it in a lot?
I had one last question on page A five. Habitable space, one of the outdoor, is that a slab?
Over here?
Yeah.
So you have habitable space outside the footprint of the house, or is that the, is that the?
That's the basement, uh um underneath the back um.
Basement extends.
Yeah, the basement extends past the the back, the side of the house.
Is that?
Code changed, where we don't view our living space beyond the footprint of that in the basement. Footprint of the house contains the basement space, and this is showing a porch or patio with basement floor.
Right. I thought that that was true, that you can't ex, you can't extend, they cannot extend the house beyond the footprint of the the first floor, let's say. Or roofed areas.
Is that true, though, like in Sag Harbor, those, this, that, those? Yeah, I I tried to do that in my.
That changed under Tom Prieto, when he was inspector, I thought that we.
We were looking at it.
I thought it did also. I know it has in other jurisdictions out here. Barry, do you remember?
I don't remember.
Yeah.
Here's how it shows on here.
Yeah.
This is the basin, this is the footprint of the house.
Yeah. So that's something we'll have to look into. Um. And I think that if it's not a rule that's in there, I think that we probably want to make it a rule, because otherwise we're gonna end up with all of these properties.
I think it's somewhere in the code.
It's in the code.
It's very good.
I find it.
Yeah, I think I know about that.
Um, so that's a limiting feature for your basement, which may alter your concept there. Um, because that's sort of where your gym is. So um I guess we need um, you know, things like where's the pool equipment, where's the drywall for the pool equipment? Uh, oh, I see where the pool equipment is. Um, you know, the where's the drywall for the pool equipment, the um the concept of the septic system? Uh, where is the pool fencing going? You know, how is that working? Um, and how, what is the the screening gonna be uh from the neighbors? So um.
I mean, I think the uh lot coverage, I think is something we can manage to work on. Um, I had a question about uh how are we feeling about the uh pyramid and the setbacks?
Well, on the north side, you're just extending the wall.
Yeah.
And the second floor is stepped back.
Yeah.
On the south side, that ten-foot distance to the uh proposed first floor addition is new, correct? This one here. Right? I don't know if that. That's the mudroom?
Yes.
And powder room? I guess if you could rethink that, it would be nicer if we didn't have that close um a setback on that side, since most of the house is almost compliant at fifty, I mean, fourteen point seven.
I think that setback is is compliant, um.
Oh, do you have the five-tenths or four-tenths rule?
We've got four-tenths there, so it is not a setback issue.
Well, total is, though, right? Um, with the four-tenths rule, they still have to add up to
Twenty.
Twenty. So we're a little bit off there, but it's not a lot off, because it's nine point nine plus ten. Okay. Ben answered that question? Uh, any other questions from the board?
No, just the ones that were stated.
So.
Did you ask the public for?
No, no, I haven't yet, I was just gonna do that. So why don't we see, there's nobody here, right? I can't, no, I'm in in the audience, I can't, no. Okay, is there anyone on Zoom? Anyone from the public that would like to speak to twenty-two Oakland Ave?
Eileen. Hi.
Hi. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Eileen Rosenberg, Ten Carver Street.
Could you raise your right hand?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, you can proceed.
Thank you. Um, I should state that I have absolutely no vested interest in this particular property. I just didn't know when it would be the appropriate time to inquire about some comment, previous comments. Is there a time at the end of this meeting for general comments?
Uh, no, there are no general comments, there are only comments um for each specific application.
Okay, okay, well, it's since it's not, I, it may or may not be relevant to this particular application, it has to do with the number of bathrooms that uh homes are now allowed to have.
You can have as many bathrooms as you want, bathrooms aren't, there is no regulation in terms of the number of bathrooms. The health department counts bedrooms, not bathrooms.
Mm-hmm.
But that's, that's all we really can, that's not really pertinent to this application. Uh, do you have anything, any, you don't have any comments specific to this application?
No, I don't, and that's why I I prefaced my my.
But but a question like that is, you could actually direct to the building department. And not us, that's not really us.
Okay, well, it actually had to, subsequently has to do with the lack of water pressure, because consistently increasing the number of bathrooms, pools, watering systems, we virtually have a drip as opposed to, but again, I don't know if that addressed to the general Z B A as they evaluate the impact on the community, or whether something, again, as you suggested, I should bring to the building department.
Yes, it's not a specific, there is no uh specific thing in the code at all about bathrooms.
Different agency.
Yeah, it's a different agency, that's really the health department, so we don't don't regulate bathrooms.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, so, uh no, no one else in the public?
No.
Okay, so um, do you have enough information, Anthony, to move forward?
Um, I know there's some more stuff, but the main stuff is, main things are, we're gonna come back to you with our preliminary septic layout, um. The uh we noticed the garage, if we um if we need any pyramid variance for the reconstructed um garage and um spot elevation.
Right, we need the spot elevations. Right, we need the spot elevations for the.
Are you gonna consider, I, I want you to consider moving the garage?
Okay.
So maybe before you do the pyramid variances, well, I wanna do them here, but you, then you may have to redo them. If, if it's required that garage be moved.
They should be done for whatever plan is proposed, but it just.
Well, it's possible that when we move the garage.
The pyramid is reduced. Well, you are from the rear unless you move it toward the house, because the, even the, you know, it's less than ten feet, the wall of the rear has to be higher than six foot eight. So this is gonna be a pyramid violation.
I was just trying to say the number of times that you redo the, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, site plan, um.
So consider moving the garage.
Move the pool closer to the house, you can move the garage to the center and back from the rear line as well.
Right, you can move the garage in a bunch of different ways, um, so that's something to study. We need the spot elevations, which would impact the house and the garage pyramid, wherever the garage ends up being. Um, pool fence gates, um, septic system, drywells, um, for both roof runoff and the swimming pool. Uh, is there anything else I'm forgetting?
Want a floor plan of the second floor of the garage, or is that not necessary for our purposes?
Is there a second floor?
It's just like a little sleeping off, not like, uh, yeah.
Um, it's the bedroom, right?
Yeah.
Well, I guess we would want full.
There's no bathroom up there or anything, it's a space for, there's a, there's a note on that, that there is a spiral staircase going up to the second floor.
I guess.
The intent is it would just be a sleeping off, no bathroom or anything.
It would, would be good to show us a plan.
It's an accessory apartment, right?
That's a, that's a legal issue, and I think our attorney would agree that, um, any. Accessory structure is not used for sleeping or cooking unless it has a covenant restriction which runs with the property under the accessory apartment law. And you don't have an application for that, nor do you have a bathroom, so you, it's sleeping within the garage.
No, you have to have it before.
Is it, so you're showing?
Yeah, the intent is.
There is a bathroom.
There is a bathroom.
Maybe stop saying ADU, because there are codes, accessory apartment.
Accessory apartment, right.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so that, so it is, it's, so is it, it's a bedroom, is what you're saying.
But it's not a bedroom, because you don't have a legal staircase up to it. There, there can't just be a ladder or spiral stairs unless they meet code.
Is it a six-foot spiral stair? Or code?
No, there's not, there's no, there's nothing in the.
It just says ladder or spiral stairs.
That's gonna have to be fleshed out.
You can't say it's like a law for sleeping, we're putting something that might not be compliant.
So we would need to see that, I mean, if there is a, a thing up there, which there could be, we need to see how you access it, because. It has to be a legal means of, you know, legal staircase, which is three foot, you know, wide. So that may alter the thinking about the, um, accessory dwelling unit. Um, is there anything else?
This is, this is a kitchen, right?
That's a kitchen.
Kitchen, bathroom.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, anything else you can think of, Val?
No.
No.
Did you, Liz, did you ever find the, um?
I didn't find it, but I'm gonna look.
Okay, so we'll, somebody will get back to you about the.
Yeah, let us know about that, I'm kind of curious about it, so.
I think of the code.
It's, it's in there somewhere.
It, it seems to me that it's in there, because I, I, I somehow remember having to deal with it. Uh, so, could I have a motion to close the public hearing for twenty-two Oakland Avenue? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, adjourned, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, could I have a, it's been a long meeting, uh, could I have a motion to adjourn? The public hearing for twenty-two Oakland Avenue to the September sixteenth meeting?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you, thank you. Okay, now we're on to decisions, and the first decision is forty-nine Rice Street.
Decision for forty-nine Rice. Um, purpose of the application is to instruct a new two-story addition to the existing residence. Require numerous variances, going to Section three hundred point four point three, three hundred and three, at one to the one, and four hundred and twelve point six to one A, um. So the property is comprised of ten thousand six hundred and thirty-three square feet, uh, where twenty-five is required, but five, uh, wide on Lexington Street. And after hearing feedback from this board, we need. Pyramid relief requested is reduced from a proposed one thousand six hundred and twenty-five cubic feet to one thousand two hundred and forty-five cubic feet for the proposed addition. Also, uh, the applicant reduced such proposed size in the new pool, it's given completely by twenty-one feet, it's well represented, we should be. Eliminating the original setback relief requested for the pool entirely, uh, and the applicant also increased the side yard setbacks from six point seven feet. Four feet, making the fall a little bit more performant when you add a setback. After hearing feedback from this board, the applicant needs those changes, and for the review of the support, we'll write information and work through by determines. That the application needs five part test and grant C two.
Great, could I have a motion to approve the decision as written for forty-nine Rice and Street?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you, um, next is the decision for fifty-three Rice and Street.
Fifty-two Rice and Street is a second story addition, so this will not be following residents, uh, and this one is full on site, the addition will be to the rear of the residence. It is, um, a second story dilemma addition, not going to impact the historic facade of the, of the property of the house. Uh, and it requires numerous variances from village code section three hundred four point three, to a setback relief, pyramid relief, uh, and more. The applicant, after hearing feedback from this board, did decide to move the pool, uh, so that the setback fee was less, and also. Um, eliminated a barbecue, eliminating that fair and leave requested to barbecue entirely. Uh, this application had four neighboring, uh, letters of support for the application. And ultimately, for the reasons set forth in the written determination, the board hereby determines to grant variances. One of the conditions of approval is to install four foot sound, ten mowing fence for the air conditioning units and upper property line. Four foot sound, ten mowing fence for the swimming pool and south, southeast property line, and also twinkle landscape street and swimming along the side.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the decision for fifty-three Rice and Street as written?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Next decision is eleven Amherst Road.
An application to construct accessory structures, including pool, pool equipment and deck in the front yard. The application runs, uh, stack hard with the pool, and as a result, the front yard is on that part of the code. We will put all of your accessory structures, therefore variances are required for three hundred, that's nine thousand one hundred and four. Um, to allow the proposed pool, pool equipment and deck to be in the front yard where accessory structures are permitted. And so the reasons set forth in the written determination, the board hereby determines to grant variances.
Great, thank you, could I?
Can I ask a question just based on my previous query?
Sure.
So the building inspector did see plans for the entire building and determined that only this, uh, part of it needed a variance, correct?
That's my understanding, but this application is actually.
Otherwise it's segmented, if we're coming up later with plans that nobody's seen before.
Well, I mean.
That was the point I was trying to make.
There is a chance, though, that, that when they go through the harbor committee review, which they're going to go through the next meeting, the harbor committee.
Got it.
There's a chance that the harbor committee wants changes made, in which case they may have to.
But are there plans that the building inspector has seen for the entire structure?
That's my.
For the building inspector, yes?
Yeah.
No, but we only saw a survey.
Right, so my understanding is that the plans that were submitted for harbor committee are fully available.
Okay, okay, sorry, okay.
Right, okay, thank you.
The only inspector looked at is not part of variance.
Okay, perfect.
But it may change, it may have to come.
I understand, I understand, thank you.
So did I, again, I can't remember, did I do more, okay, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the attorney's written decision.
Second? All in favor?
I second, all in favor, aye.
Great, thank you, uh, could I now have a motion to close the public meeting of the Village of South Harbor zoning board of appeals for August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you.